We will call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. I would like to ask Sue to do roll call, please.
Chuck Malky.
Here.
Andrea Fick.
Here.
Kim Winter.
Here.
Carrie Germaine.
Here.
Autumn Henry.
Here.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Here.
Thank you. Members on the board currently here. All right, so welcome, everyone. It's nice to see all of you. Tonight, we have a special board meeting for the purpose of filling an open position. Before we start, I want to thank Mrs. Holly Jarvis for her service on our board. And she has chosen to serve the community in many ways, and she's continuing in that capacity as she leaves the school board and continues to volunteer in the community. So I want to thank her and want to congratulate her for her service. So tonight, as I mentioned, we're here for an open position. As a school board, we have the responsibility of selecting someone for the open position, and we have to do that within 30 days, which we are. If we don't do this, that goes to the Genesee Intermediate School District. And we would prefer to have some control over the folks in the community who are interested in doing this and serving. So the way this is going to work tonight, we have 10 candidates, which is a lot of folks, and we're very happy for that. And we're thankful that people are willing to serve and coming forward. School board service isn't easy. I'll just give you a little hint. It's not easy, but it's very rewarding. If you keep your eye on the prize, which is the students when they walk across the stage at graduation, it's very rewarding to do this. So we have folks who have submitted their resumes, their letters of intent or interest. They were given questions to answer, which they have, for the most part, sent back to us. And we have a process to go through, ask questions of folks, allow them to answer questions, and they have eight minutes, correct, Sue? And our friend Sue down here at the end will keep track of the eight minutes. So I heard someone coming in saying they were very nervous. Just take a breath. It's okay. I know we look scary, but we're really not too scary. So with that, and did I miss anything? No? Did I miss anything, Sue? Oh, let's do the pledge. Oh. I don't have any children here to bring up, so I'll invite all of you. Thank you. All right, so we do have two opportunities for public comment. The first one is related to items on our agenda, which I think you can pick up over there on the table, maybe, Sue? And if you have anything to present before the board or say to the board, please come forward to the podium, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes or less. And as I stated, there'll be another opportunity towards the end of the meeting to also provide public comment. Is there anyone? No? Okay. Next on our agenda, we have approval of the regular meeting minutes from our last meeting and approval of the agenda on the consent agenda. And I would entertain a motion for approval.
I move.
Andrea.
Support.
Kim? Comments or questions? Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Chuck Malky.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Yes.
Carrie Germaine.
Yes. Thank you. All right. I jumped the gun. I was so excited to interview folks and meet them. I already explained the process. At the end of the interviews, we will ask each of the board members to give us their top four folks that they'd like to see considered, and then we can have a discussion where we can identify their number one and their number two candidates. And we'll go from there.
Madam President, I have ordered. According to our board member vacancies and appointments, there's no set way of doing it. Therefore, anything that we do with the way you've set it up would be illegitimate. So I've reviewed the bylaws and board members and vacancies, and there is no specific way to do it. I don't know who chose this system instead of a yea or nay system, but I refer you to Policy Number 2000 Subsection 2404, Board Members' Apairments and Vacancies.
Chuck, we have been using, this time and previous times, we have been guided by the Michigan Association of School Boards' recommendation for filling an open position.
It's never been adopted in our policies and procedures. So I would refer to Andrea if she knows anything about the policies and procedures in this. And that's a recommendation. That is not what we have adopted here.
Then I move that we adopt this procedure.
Okay, and you have to have normally how many readings? Two readings.
And when did you find this policy, Chuck?
I referred to it last night when I was reading through it.
So just last night, you realized this process? And you didn't say we should cancel this meeting?
I didn't. I'm not going to cancel the meeting.
Okay.
It's within 24 hours.
I'm just wondering why you would wait till now to...
Well, I wonder why, as you the chair of it, you didn't know how it goes and you didn't review it ahead of time. It's a one-page document. It doesn't say anything about the system that we're doing. It has to be adopted by board policy. You want to follow the laws and the rules. I do, too, and it's right here. I refer to it as 2400. If anybody can show me where it's been adopted officially, please refer me to that.
So you're saying we can do it any way we want?
Can you do what?
This process night any way we want. We don't have an official anything.
Right. You have to have board consensus on the way you do it.
Okay.
I'd entertain a motion for adoption of this process for this evening's procedure. I would support that. Any second?
And when are you going to do the second reading?
She said for tonight, for tonight's procedure, to have a process for tonight's procedure. We have to agree on something, is what you're saying, right?
This information was sent out to you in June, Chuck, and it's been sent by...
I did read the information that was sent out in June, and it said, you know, refer to the M A S B, you know, and it said that, I think, well, I have it in my notes for the exact verbiage, but something about it has to be laid out in the board's bylaws, which I think would have been looked into, given...
I assumed it was in the bylaws.
We knew we were getting a new candidate tonight.
I will go back to, we have used this process consistently in the last...
Then why hasn't it been?
Seventeen years. It is the recommendation of the Michigan Association of School Boards, which is our association as school board members.
It's not our policy, though.
Right, and it says in there that it should be adopted. So if it's been, what has been used, then how come it was never written into a policy or a procedure?
Can I get a second on Andrea's motion? Your motion, I support it. Thank you. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Autumn Henry.
No.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
No.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Carrie Germaine.
Yes.
Chuck Malky.
No.
Three and three? So are you going to tell me, Chuck, that we're going to have all of these folks who've invested their time tonight to come before us, who've expressed interest in being on this board, that you're going to turn them away?
No, I'm not turning them away. We can come up with other processes. I'm glad that they all came. I wish there was more people, but it's great. It's your lack of leadership not following the policies and procedures.
No, I'm following. I'm following the procedures that we have followed for at least 18 years.
Then why hasn't it been adopted?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to stop right there.
Okay.
We have agreed as a board, no surprises. You received this information in June. In June.
Yes.
You've received it since. If you had any concerns or issues, you should have brought it forth. We've had a board meeting since this information was sent out. I don't like you bringing forward surprises. And I apologize to those of you who've brought yourselves here this evening.
So since we're a tie vote, can we just turn this over to G I S D?
That's where it's happening next.
Fantastic. I move that we do that.
Well, we can have more motions. I'd like to make the people out here.
I just made a motion.
Okay, you make a motion for G I S D.
Hand it over to G I S D. Problem solved, Chuck.
Supporting our people?
Yeah.
Except for it's not.
They can appoint anyone they want to.
We could do a yea or nay vote, too. Can't we just have a simple yea or nay vote?
What would be wrong with that?
I don't understand that. It's all in public, and everybody can hear it and see it. Instead of on paper with points. I don't understand that, but...
How are you going to yea or nay 10 people?
Just like we do at townships. You call, somebody nominates a person.
This isn't a township. It's a school board.
But we nominate candidates there, too. It's a government entity. Okay, she wants to, there's a motion on the floor to do it to G I S D. If she gets support, then she gets support.
You would delegate that authority to G I S D because of your petty concerns?
That was Andrea's motion.
No, I'm talking back to what Chuck brought up. You've known that you weren't going to be in support of this. Why didn't you bring this forward?
Because when I bring things forward, when I found out about, when I read it last night, you seem to ignore my emails as I've sent out...
No, Chuck, I will not be bullied by you. You want me to go there with the public, I will. I'm so sorry you have to endure this, folks. I will not be bullied by you.
You're the bully, Carrie.
No, I am not.
Just because I talk loud doesn't mean I'm a bully. That's what everybody assumes.
You insinuate everyone around you is.
I'm not insinuating anybody was. I said you were. I didn't say anybody else.
Is there a second for the motion? I mean, we got to figure out something.
We think we should...
What is your concern about this process, Chuck? Let's go there.
Here you go. I got a question.
The fact that it wasn't agreed upon as a board, I think, well, that's my, that's my concern.
But we could agree upon it right now.
But again, I don't. So we should have had this discussion before, I guess.
Then we're a tie vote, so...
So the nose takes it. So...
A tie vote fails.
I'm asking you, Chuck, what we have to do to change this?
To make it palatable for you.
A yea or nay vote? Bring up the candidates, let them talk, and we can vote? I don't understand why that, it's a, it's a simple yes or no.
How is that different than what we're doing?
Well, this is done...
We're giving, we're supposed to be here to allow folks to present to the board, go through an interview process. We've already asked them to provide us with information.
I've read it all.
Yes, and then we go through a process that is required by law that we actually verbally share with the public and record in the meeting minutes who said what about what candidate, who they chose.
A or nay wouldn't do that?
You're going to listen to an interview and say yea or nay? We have to document who has identified what candidates to go forward.
Okay, then roll call.
Otherwise, it becomes a secret ballot. We cannot do that.
Then roll call.
We're not doing a secret ballot by yea or nay.
I mean, I did executive interviews for a corporation for six years, and we did something similar to this. We didn't say yes or no. You can be a store manager for Target and carry keys to $100,000 in the safe at all times. We did not, it was a grading scale.
Yeah, that's also not the school board, public and government, yeah.
But it's executive interviews. It's interviewing people for an important job. You don't like yea or nay.
Definitely not local government, though.
What's your problem with that?
It's an example that I have experience of hiring people in a position.
It wasn't agreed upon. It was just thrown at us, saying, this is what we're doing, and I'm getting sick of that. I'm getting sick, without having to say. So there's my two cents.
Again, there's a motion on the table. We need a second or move on? I mean, somebody's got to come up with...
Or we can take another motion, because that one probably expired by now, right?
No, there's no time limit.
Oh, yeah, the president has to expire. Sorry. So we can sit here in silence, or we can move.
So let's go back to a motion to adopt this process, so we can move forward. I don't think it's fair to the folks...
We already voted on that one. We don't need to vote on it again. The votes have been tallied on that one. We're not doing this again.
The motion on the table is we hand it over to G I S D.
And nobody seconded your motion. So now the board president can either say, I would entertain another motion, or...
Yeah.
But that one didn't get seconded, so we didn't vote, that that would be correct either.
Someone else can speak up.
Okay, well, I vote we do a roll call, vote, or a motion to do a roll call.
For what?
To nominate our candidates.
How is that different than having everyone interview and then ask each person?
That's exactly what it is. Listen to the interviews. We jot down our candidates. We do a roll call. We say the name of the person. It's, it's done on boards of, within this city. So... The point is, a policy should have been written.
Well, if the policy is we can just decide in the moment, that is the policy, and we're deciding in the moment.
Yeah, that's, so we don't have rules, and you're okay with that?
It's not, we have a rule or not. We're saying we can decide now if this is the way we want to do it.
Exactly. There's no written policy. So we can just fly up by the seat of our pants, do whatever we want, anytime we want. That's not how this is...
That's literally what you're saying right now.
No, that's what you're saying, because you refuse to do, adopt a policy for instances like so.
So those of you in the audience who are patiently sitting there, we do have a process that we have followed for many years. It does have documents that we have in front of us that indicate who the people are who are interviewing. We have an opportunity to evaluate their answers to our questions. And then as a result of that, we ask each person who's sitting up here on the board to give us their feedback and to identify those folks that they would like to consider going forward. That's the process.
Because you say so. Carrie, when I was appointed...
No, this is the Michigan Association of School Boards' recommended process.
Recommended.
Yes, Alyssa, you were...
Carrie, when I was appointed in 2021, I think I was the last one to be appointed so far.
Yes, you were.
Wasn't this the same process?
Exactly.
Why wasn't there a policy made?
So here's a great point, because the public is basically telling me how ridiculous this is right now. When you vote on the first candidate, so who's first? Ms. Allen is first, and we vote on Ms. Allen, and the majority rules she gets a job. That's what you're saying.
No. I'm saying we listen to the interviews. We get a roll call. We say the name of the candidate that we choose.
The first one to get the majority wins.
We have 10 people to interview. I'm sorry, all of you. We have 10 people to interview.
We're wasting time. Let them interview.
We are. This was also the...
Can I ask you a question real quick? Chuck, what policy were you referring to?
2404.
And what did you say? It says we have to...
I didn't say anything about have to.
It says we may, they may use that. Is that correct?
I'm asking where it's been adopted in our policies and procedures, that this type of system is adopted to do this, and I don't see it.
Does it say that in the policy that it has to be?
No, it doesn't say anything.
That's what the M A S B handout said.
M A S B says recommendation.
It says that it should be adopted into our bylaws.
It doesn't...
Should be, should be, as a legal term is not must or shall.
So instead, let's just do whatever, yeah, whatever we want.
It says may, Sue, correct? Yes.
The board may, in its discretion, undertake one or more of the following procedures when seeking to fill the board's...
To fill.
This process gives us a consistent way, just for the public to know, a consistent way to gather the information so that we're in compliance with all of the laws and the rules of the state of Michigan, and to have announced it by board member publicly, and it's recorded in our minutes. So it's a consistent process to follow, all right?
Because neither the revised school code nor the election code dictates the process used by a board in appointing a new board member. The method of filling the vacancy should be clearly outlined in a board's bylaws.
Kim, did you have any questions? I'm sorry. There's been a lot of...
No, I, the only thing I can say, I can see where you're saying that a majority could get, you know, all the votes with the first-person interview. But my question is, could we not listen to everybody speak, and then we do a yea or nay? After they're all done speaking?
It still has to be documented, and then we still have to identify...
And what do you do when you have five people that have four votes? And then we have five people that have four votes.
Then those two people go to the, or five people, or however many go to the next round?
Does that make sense?
It's, literally.
I'm trying to understand bottom what your issue is with doing it the way that we've described.
I've already said three times. I've said it three times.
Yeah, Kim, was there, there was probably something else you had?
No, I just, I'm not sure that I'm good with this point system either. It seems like it is more maybe confusing than it needs to be. I don't, I read the policy also, and there's nothing says that we can do, like, pretty much whatever we adopt to do. But I just, I don't, I'm, I guess I'm, I guess I'm okay with it if, if... I don't want all these people to have to go home either. But that was my concern, too. Couldn't we just listen to everybody speak and then? Because, I mean, we're going to assign them points anyway.
That's what they're saying. They're saying, give me yes or no.
No, I mean, with the previous way, we would have assigned points anyway.
The final part of this process is they, each person identifies their number one and their number two candidate. Number one gets two points. Number two gets one point. And then we look at who is the top point.
Would it make a difference if they just gave the top two, skip the top four? Go from there, picking out one layer?
That can work, I guess, if you have consistency, because at some point you have to pare it down. Going from 10 to two is difficult. Hence the weighted points.
If we only get to choose one person, so narrow it down to your top two makes sense. Because again, we're not, probably all going to have the same top two. There's certainly, we'd still be a tie vote on the top two. But at least it narrows down to 10. That's 20 votes out there, right, basically?
If you do the top two in ranked order, you still could use the point system.
All right, Sue, where are we?
Well, I think somebody would have to make a motion if you wanted to go with this other system again. You'd have to re-vote, and you can tweak it however you want. You can take, like Jim said, the top four and just go to the top two. And then just give, the, everyone's top two gets, number one gets two points, and number two gets one point.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Well, I'll make a motion to do that.
So at the end of the interviews, Kim? Okay. Identify the top...
Top two.
Two? Okay.
I will support that.
All right. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please? And can you read the motion as you're recording it?
Yes, so the motion is to follow this procedure that you have, but just take it down to the top two instead of going through the four, and then giving the top two, or the first gets two points, and the second, or basically gets one point. Is that correct? Does that sound good?
And that's what you intended, correct? Kim?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Carrie Germaine.
Yes.
Chuck Malky.
In the spirit of moving things on, yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yeah.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Andrea Fick.
Yes.
Seven yes. Thank you, Sue. All right, so I'm going to propose that we start over here. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. I do appreciate sincerely, and on behalf of the district, for you expressing interest, if you are here as a candidate and for you as a family member or a friend, if you're here to support the candidates. This is something that we do take very seriously. There is a process that we can follow. If you have any questions along the way, once you're up here for the interview, please feel free to ask. I know everybody's just waiting to get up in front of us. So with that, did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Kitchen?
No, I think we're all set. Good luck.
All right. I think the first person, we're doing this alphabetically by last name. The first person we have is Ayanna Allen. Ms. Allen, if you'd like to step forward.
I like the podium, though. I'll take this. I'm already short. That's all right. That's all right.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Oh. Can I just hold this, because I don't, I don't want to break anything?
Travis keeps close tabs on those, so...
Okay. I won't break it, Travis.
All right.
Can I ask a quick question? Can you tell me exactly how I'm being evaluated? Is it how I answer the questions? Do you have certain criteria that you're looking for me to answer, and that's how I will be scored? Is it how I present myself, just from my knowledge?
So, so the, I'm sorry. The document that each board member has, just as a guide. If we only have two people, we'd probably use it less frequently, but with as many candidates as we have. We do have one that looks at the answers of the questions, but also what their impression is. So, and I don't mean that in a negative way.
No, I understand completely.
And I know you work in human resources, so you understand that.
I do. I do.
I did read everybody's documents.
Yeah.
So there's a, this is not binding by any means. It's just a guide that each person has to use and as a reminder of each individual. So when you're ready.
I don't have a document even for her.
You don't have my Ayanna Allen?
Well, it'd be nice if there were a new point system. I can do that.
I'll try to repack it, make sure you...
Sure. I look through it. I remember...
No, it's, I just...
She's the first one I go for. Doesn't look that, maybe I'll pass it.
Oh, my God. Right here.
I'm sorry. Now I have it.
I apologize.
Thank you. So Ms. Allen, may I call you Ayanna?
You can.
And do I pronounce it correctly? Please tell me if I don't.
Ayana.
Ayana.
You are. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so these questions may sound familiar to you and to others that are in the audience. Please tell us about your background and experiences. And this is also for the community who's watching on our stream, and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
All right, so...
And Sue, I'm sorry, can you start the clock? Thank you. We're good.
Ready? All right, so, and I did write and send in responses, so I'll read some of that and do a little bit ad-libbing to stay within eight minutes. My name is Ayanna Allen. Like you mentioned, I am a business leader in the community. I have the privilege of also teaching college-age students in an online format. I've been doing that for about five years. But besides all of that, my biggest titles that really matter to me is, one, as a wife, and two, as a mother, together. I do, I am a mother of four. I do have three that will be in high school. So, hey, I'm taking all prayers. But saying that, education is very important to me. My goal is to ensure my children, as well as the children in my community, get a great education. I have had to move with my jobs, and one of the things I do look at is the schools, the schools, the school ratings, the school boards, and the impact of the schools on the community, which is one of the reasons why I'm excited to say I do... Which is one of the reasons why I'm excited to say I do live in Schwartz Creek, because that was something that I was able to look at. I do have a quote in here that I believe that education is the great equalizer. No matter what background or what you've experienced, what I have learned, having a good education in the right field can really open up a lot of doors. And I want to ensure that our future generations are getting that. Not only my children, but the children in this community are getting that education to help them be prepared. I also, and I don't need to say it, but I don't always look like people that I work with, but I make sure to be a voice for everybody. Some I identify with and some I don't. And to be parents in the community, whether it's teachers or what have you, I look to be that voice that sometimes is unheard. Thank you. Yeah?
I love the voice for everyone.
Yes.
As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students in the district. What does this mean to you?
And I'll read some of the verbatim that I did submit. I have to make those type of decisions every day. Some decisions that I don't necessarily agree with. But as long as it's not anything illegal, I can come to a consensus and support. I'm also aware that as a trustee, I would have to make hard decisions. Like I said, that I don't necessarily agree, or I may do something a little different. Right? This isn't Ayanna's board, this is a Schwartz Creek board. And so my goal is to ensure that I am that voice for the community. So whether I necessarily agree with it or not, if it's the right thing to do, and again, if it's, if it's illegal, then I do know how to, as well as I can come to a consensus, agree and support.
Thank you. Finally, what is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools? And how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
And I would say, like I mentioned earlier, just really, my focus is, one is fiscal responsibility, student achievement and opportunities. I want others that move to this community after, you know, five or 10 years from now, that we are fiscally sound, right? So when they look up Schwartz Creek, they'll still say, me and my family will move there because of whether it's the reputation of the school or the quality of the graduates that they are creating. Also, as a business professional, I have done some work in workforce development. And I would really like to come on and help as a liaison to help with those high school students. Everybody's not going to go to college. I have two master's degrees, I know how important it is. But some might wanna go into a field, right? Whether that's a trade or what have you. And I just want to help ensure that they have that pipeline and can still be successful if they do something different. And if not, help them be prepared to go to college. As a college professor, I'll tell you, unfortunately, I can tell where some of the students went to school, because they're not always prepared for college. And that's unfortunate, right? So my goal was to ensure as much as I can, that pipeline, whether they choose college, whether they choose a trade or something different, that they'll be prepared. And also work with the community. I am the daughter of a teacher. My father's 80 years old and he is still teaching high school, Everett High School in Lansing, Michigan. So I know some of the nuances that he deals with, some of the pains that he deals with. The Lansing School District Board, I know the board that he has to deal with. So just being able to make those connections in all areas.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very much. And how much time do we have left, Sue?
All right, all right.
All right. If you'd like to wrap it up, that's, that's up to you.
Okay, yep, just, you know, first of all, I'm honored that I even had this opportunity to come speak in front of the school board. We've only been here about two years and when the position to run, I was like, ooh, should I do it? And I said, no, I'll wait. So when this came up, I said, this may be my opportunity. And if not, I believe that what's for me is for me. And there's a certain thing with timing. But just to make that connection, I do know that everybody, I, I negotiate with a very important union every day. So I know that individuals are not always able to agree, right? When sitting there, I was like, oh goodness, I feel like I'm at work. But, but we do need to come to the table, right? And, and come to a consensus for our students, for our babies, for the teachers, for our community, right? And thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. So one of our board candidates will be joining us virtually this evening due to personal circumstances that make it in-person attendance difficult. We're grateful for their interest in serving the district and are pleased to offer remote option to ensure all candidates have the opportunity to participate in tonight's interviews. But I just need to get him on the phone and then we'll work the microphone through that. All right, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect.
Mr. Burson?
All right.
Mr. Burson?
Wonderful.
This is Kiri Jermaine. Thank you for joining us this evening. Could you also, for purposes of compliance with the state rules, could you also just tell us where, where you're calling from? What city you're calling from? Just where, where you're calling from?
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, there's a, there's a slight delay with the video. So I was hearing your voice going twice. Yeah, I'm calling from Schwartz Creek. I live here in Schwartz Creek on Engels.
Thank you, sir. We just need that for the record. Thank you. All right. And because you're, you're here virtually, that's, that's the purpose. All right. So, Mr. Burson, I know you said you were watching, but as we mentioned earlier, each candidate will have an opportunity to answer questions and you will be given eight minutes, which Sue Gould will be starting the clock. And at the end of the questions, we'll give you a chance to kind of wrap up a little bit. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, so are you ready for the first question?
I am.
And can you hear me okay?
Yes, I will, if, if there's a strange silence, please do assume that it's because I, I haven't been able to hear it, because I can hear you perfectly. But since there's a delay in the video, I, I don't want anyone to think that I'm ignoring them.
No, but if your phone, okay, sorry, the phone is not too far from me, so we might be able to connect that way.
Wonderful.
Perfect. All right, Mr. Burson, please tell us about your background and experiences and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
Thank you. Thank you. So first, I do wanna say that just, holy cow, the competition is, if Ayanna has any indication, gonna be really stiff. And I'm kind of floored by her answers, so I, I just wanna foreground everything with this. And I'll read my statements that I sent in now. So I am an active member of the community who looks out for the interests of the school district. I'm a fully remote securities licensed team captain in a Michigan insurance agency and the proud owner of a home my wife remembers seeing on her way to daycare, at the Mary Crepo Childhood Development Center, or whatever it was called at the time. As somebody who helps people prepare for the unexpected every day, I have a keen eye for things that might lead to headaches down the road. In September of last year, after corresponding with board members and Jeff via email, I made a comment that resulted in a change in MCP, Mary Crepo Park, for the audience, which benefits everyone. The issue at hand, specifically a sound issue that could result in lawsuits of five or even six figures in many previous cases, is something that board had not been aware of previously until I brought it to their attention. And at a later board meeting, as a result of my comments, some landscaping was added to Mary Crepo Park, which is exactly what I've been hoping for, because I mean, this is something that Chuck has been working really, really hard to get back to the community. I do wanna give credit where credit's due. And I, I just think that it's really cool that this was handled so well. My work experience includes a deep understanding of retirement and other investment accounts, which will help to ensure every employee's retirement will stay on track. I also help with the insurance side. I know there was a recent unexpected $20,000 insurance expense for cyber exposure, which I would have mentioned before, threw a curveball at the budget, which nonetheless does seem to be really, really well done. I can also help with the technology aspect, as someone who, for medical reasons, would need to participate remotely. I'm well acquainted with the online only experience that many citizens will experience. My perspective will help the community to feel that things are transparent for everyone. And of course, they already are, but sometimes people don't feel like it. And I can help reduce that perceived gap in transparency. I, what's my time? I don't wanna go over.
Four minutes and 50 seconds left.
About five minutes.
Okay. So basically, I love Schwartz Creek. My wife and I lived here from 2016 to 2018, moved away for work. And now we are over the moon to have bought our house on Engels last August. We're gonna be living here as long as we're able to climb stairs. And we wanna help the community in any way we can. And I do wanna say that the transparency and the professionalism in the board, even and especially when there are disagreements, really louts me. And I wanna be part of that. And I want Schwartz Creek School Districts to be an example for the nation, because I think it's the best place, period.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Appreciate that. Next, as a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students in the district. What does that mean to you?
Thank you. So for my data job, I set up and manage retirement accounts, insurance policies, and other financial services. And I've been successful for the last decade in this field by putting the client's needs first. That makes my clients successful, it keeps them happy, and it builds trust in the right way, because I'm helping them to find the best path to reach their goals. And I'll do the same exact thing here. The students in the district come first, always. I can't imagine acting any other way. I know that Chuck is a fiduciary. I'm not legally fiduciary, but I act as if I am one, just, I can't not.
Thank you, sir. All right, next is, what is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools? And how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
So my vision is one where we take pride in our strength and we publicize them in order to draw students' engagement to our school district. We are a beacon of transparency and accessibility. I'll use my technological and my verbal skills to extend our online reach in line with the Schwartz Creek Community Schools' vision and mission. I'll strengthen our connections with Kettering and other organizations, bolster the STEAM initiative, engage media outlets, and gather extensive feedback from parents, students, and other stakeholders. I'll use my financial experience to keep a close eye on the finances, use my experience to anticipate future risks, make sure that our schools have the best outcome no matter what happens in the future. And all this will result in positive press for our district, which will draw money, engagement, and families to Schwartz Creek. And I'll make sure that we use those resources to help our students, our community, in conversation with the excellent people already on the board.
Well, thank you, sir, for that. Now, how much time, Sue? One minute 55 seconds, if you'd like to wrap it up.
I was, I was wondering if any of you have questions for me, because I know it's, it's not very difficult for somebody to be remote. I know this is the first time thing, and I do want to express my genuine appreciation for everyone being so willing to, to allow me. I've got a medical condition which prevents me from doing stuff in person. But I wanted to say thank you and ask if any of you have specific questions for me.
I'm getting the, the shaking of heads, Mr. Burson. Anything else?
Not, not at this point. I'll, I'll yield and, and thank you and may the best candidate be appointed.
Thank you, sir, and thanks for your interest. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Burson.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have Brittany Bowie. Is it Bowie?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Hi, Brit- Brittany. Thank you for being here.
There we go.
Is it working?
Yes.
Good, thank you. All right, well, thanks for being here again. I'm Sue, you have a timer?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Please tell us about your background and experiences and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
Well, hello, my name is Brittany. The reason I saw the opening for this position and wanted to jump on as in person of interest is mainly because of trying to get myself more involved with the school district. I do have a daughter who is going into first grade and we bought our house about four years ago. The main reason we chose Schwartz Creek was to kind of get out of where my family is and to kind of create our own sense of establishment in a place. And we found Schwartz Creek. We've absolutely loved it ever since, moving here with the small community that it is, but seeing the growth in the short four years that we have been here, and then as well as our daughter starting school in the school district. With the, my background and experiences, I'm seeing this position as more of where I'm coming from as have medical and law enforcement and fire background. I don't necessarily have any form of education background, as far as teaching and things along that nature. But I saw this as an opportunity to bring something that I feel strongly about with the, not lack of education with the community of knowing the medical and law enforcement backgrounds to the schools, but also that exact same thing, the lack of knowledge meant that the community has when it comes to the schools on certain situations, and school safety is a bigger part of that. I have noticed a couple incidences where there's been community outreach with the safety of the schools. And that is just a normal, everyday thing that we have, unfortunately, with the way that our world is going. But that's where I saw my position as coming in, as more of a voice for that and bringing into, with my background and experiences, with having, making difficult decisions, being put in difficult situations, having to de-escalate situations and being the, with people at their lowest point in their lives, being able to turn that and making it into a more positive. It's about just really knowing. Once somebody knows kind of the process and knows what's going on, then the understanding and the fallback of being able to come together as a community to show the improvement is where I see it.
Thank you. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students in the district. What does that mean to you?
So I honestly wanna say that this question kind of made me chuckle a little bit and kind of brought in some argument on my side, just reading it over. Because I understand the point of the, of the question. To not miss, you know, make something, make a decision, a judgment that would benefit myself, my family, my child, something along that nature. But I also would say that the decisions that you make every single day would affect my child, my family, my community, and everything. So being a part of that would be, obviously, to what is the best for everyone, which I would have to assume, which then entitled would be best for my child, my community, me, my family. So that's where the, I would be able to put away the fact of it benefiting just me, just my family. But I thought it was also funny to where the decisions that I would be a part of making would have to benefit, and I would have to see benefit the community. And I would have to put trust that whatever that decision would be, would be in the best beneficial way for the community, which entitled would affect my family and child and moving forward for everything.
Thank you for that. Finally, what is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools? And how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
My vision for the future of the Schwartz Creek Schools would be, basically- My vision for the future of the Schwartz Creek Schools would be basically tying into, like I said, what would be in the first question. I do see a lot of focus more on definitely improving the schools and the aspect of how the future is pertaining to the students, but their safety and everything that goes along with that also as well. Like I said, I do sit strongly on the fact of having the students feel safe in their schools, and a big part of that of being able to be able to flourish in their schools. If they don't feel safe, then what are they doing? So as far as seeing the future, just being able to have a safe, fun environment that the students are able to learn, have fun, have people that they connect and grow with, and just be able to prosper into the best humans that they're able to be.
Thank you. How much time, Sue?
Three minutes.
Okay. Anything you'd like to say as a wrap-up?
Like I said, when I saw the opening position, this was something that it was more of just I want to see what I could do for the community. I did just have a, finished the first season of coaching my daughter's baseball league here in Schwartz Creek, so that was fun jumping on as a coach. Her father was the head coach and I was the assistant coach, so that was fun, being able to do that. We were both loving with the sports. So being able to be a coach and get back to the community, seeing all the little kids, and having that fun and connecting with the parents was super, super great experience. But like I said, this was more of a bringing just a unique, I guess, experience for me, not having any educational background as far as teaching and being involved in schools in general, but having more of a medical, law enforcement, fire background, and to see if that would be able to bring different opinions to the table.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Of course, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Ken Engel.
Carrie, can I say something really quickly?
You may.
Ken sent me his questions on Sunday, just like everybody else, and I sent them to the board members. There's a half sheet missing from your packet, the last half of his answers to his questions. I can pause, Engel, print it off if you'd like?
I'll read him verbatim. I have the email.
Okay, great, because you have received the questions, but you don't have them in your packet.
I might need nine minutes, though.
Thank you, Ken, for understanding. I appreciate that.
We're humans.
Hi, Ken.
Ken Engel.
Sorry. So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Haven't seen you in a while. Please tell us about your background and experiences and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
I have a lot of experiences. Been in law enforcement for 36 years, retired from the City of Flint, currently the police chief out at Iron and Italian Township. I've been a detective. I was SRO officer out at Linden Schools for eight years. Been very active in unions, negotiating contracts, discipline, and so on and so forth with that. And I'm adding, let me page one on this to make it much shorter. Also, with the union stuff, I've also sat on the other side of the table. As a board member here for seven years, I was elected in 2011 to the Schwartz Creek Board that served through the end of 2018, so I'm familiar with the concept of here. I'm currently a trustee at Clayton Township, board member, and I've served two stints on the Schwartz Creek Area Fire Department as a board member there. Familiar with your budgets, budgets in general. I do think I bring quite a bit of knowledge, and I won't go through all of page one. You guys can look at that. And I think after watching, not tonight, just watching the board for the last few years, I do think that it'd be nice to come back to this.
As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students and the district. What does that mean to you?
This is the one I'll read, I guess apparently you did not get. Question two, simple answer is children first. I have no issues with doing what's in the best interest of the children, the school district, and the community. I can't think of any topic that would put myself, my family, or my friends in front of the education of children. I do not have any family or close friends that are employed in the district. And to give you an example of just how passionate I am about certain things here, I think you have knowledge of this, Carrie, I'm not sure if the rest of yous do. Back in 2016, and I won't mention names unless you'd like to know who the superintendents were at the time, I went to the superintendent about what I call the reverse Title IX complaint here involving baseball fields. Had several complaints, my parents, I brought it to the superintendent's attention, he ignored it. Also brought it to the board's attention, and it was ignored. We're literally violating Title IX in a reverse fashion. Does everyone know what Title IX is? Okay. No? Title IX, and I'm giving you a short version of it. It was put in place to equalize athletics and the treatment of women, mainly females in any area. Predominantly, it was seen in education at colleges and at the school level. So what you had here was you had two magnificent softball diamonds and a pretty mediocre baseball diamond that drove parents crazy. I made a reverse Title IX complaint with the federal government and had two meetings with gentlemen from Cleveland. When the next superintendent came in, and I was no longer on the board, I met with that current superintendent. We come to an agreement, and I'm not saying I created that masterpiece on Miller Road, created a second diamond, though. And we agreed to it. It was not done in the timely manner that it was promised by that superintendent, and many board members were never made aware of it. So I think at that point in time, I kind of did what was in the best interest of children as an example. And if any of you would like, I have a copy of the paperwork at home, but I also know your superintendent can access what that superintendent signed at the time, if you'd like to see it.
Thank you. All right. So that was your number two question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you need the number, pull the number three up?
I've got it.
Okay. What is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools, and how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
My vision for education is very simple, provide the children with the best staff, tools, and facilities necessary to learn in a safe and up-to-date environment. How would my skill set and leadership promote this? We must look, we must be forward thinkers and learn from our mistakes in the past. As a board, we need to look further into the future and create a 20- to 30-year plan for this district. And to give you a little insight on that, the last thing we did as, I did as a board member here was we put the bond, okayed the bond for it to be on the ballot to improve the district back in 2018. One of the things I found very disturbing, and I've lived here since 92, and I'd been on the school board at that time for seven years and didn't realize that when that bond matures, every building in this district but one will be over 80 years old. I will say as a previous board member, and to the other previous board members, and this current board, not saying we're all failures, but we have ignored that the buildings in our district are aging very fast, and we have no plan, none. And I'm putting my hand up as a guilty party of what to do about that. That's coming faster than we think, so I would like to see us do a 20- or 30-year plan. What you find with most superintendents, police chiefs, not picking on you, Jim, they're creating their next resume for their next job. I mean, we saw Pratt do it, we saw Hall do it, and we saw Manka do it. And I don't fault them because as board members, we're the responsible party. We gave them the opportunity to do that. It's our responsibility as board members to give them what we think is important, not for them to build a resume and get their name. Wow, you know, I pushed a bond through. Wow, I got a millage through. And I see it in my work. We had a guy, and that's what we, he was the resume builder from hell, you know, at the City of Flint Police Department. So I think that's where I would like to be back here on this board and, you know, hold not only myself, but the rest of us all accountable to move this district forward to what it's going to be in 20 or 30 years.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ken, for grace. Okay. Next up is Jessica Lanave. Hello, Jessica.
Hello. Good evening.
How are you?
Pretty well, thanks.
Good.
Yes.
All right. Let's start. Please tell us about your background and experiences and why you'd like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
Okay, thanks. I'm Jessica Lanave. I've lived in this district now for over 22 years with my amazing husband and awesome children that are both Schwartz Creek graduates. I served, well, I volunteered in a variety of roles within the district, both related to my kids and not for many years. And an opportunity, and it's funny to hear Ken talk about serving, Ken actually was involved with my appointment to the board in 2018. There was a position that opened up, and I opted to apply for it. Somebody let me know about it and said, "Your name's come up." And the funny thing was, as the person that contacted me, I told my husband, I said, "I don't think they could pick me out of a lineup." And I say that because like my service to this district in those varying roles didn't have anything to do with who knows me or not. It's just showing up. And I feel like that with the board here today, like why I want to serve. I really feel, I said it then, seven years ago, I'll say it now, that my skill set, for whatever reason, there's a tick in me that really likes board work. And with my humility out the door a little bit there, I'm pretty good at it, you know? And it's fun, and it's exciting, and I'm passionate. And this district and the education of our kids and what happens with our community is very important to me. So I've served in a variety of roles on this board when I served, as secretary, as treasurer for multiple years, as a representative to the County School Board Association on the Bond Steering Committee, of helping, I was involved when we had to select a new superintendent previously, I know I'm segueing in maybe to the second question there, the variety of experiences and challenges that this district is facing at this moment and for the years to come, I have had very recent experience with. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students and the district. What does that mean to you?
I appreciate that. I think I've already heard it as well, and to do the right thing. And I'm going to wrap my husband up for a hot second, because in my answer, I had it in there, and he said, "Take it out." And the more I think about it, and I have said this before, I've said it for numerous years, that in coming to make these decisions, that my priorities are our students, our staff, and our community, in that order. I've made really difficult decisions, and if I may, I'm even going to point, and I, all the best. Michael and I had a massive disagreement about something in a way, right? And, is it okay? Well, I'm going to tell them anyway. But it was the split in the upper and lower elementaries, right? That was a very difficult decision to make, yet we had multiple conversations, and I'm able to listen and hear other people's perspective and take them into consideration, and even change what my opinion and my view may be. And I was thinking about during COVID, I thought about putting the example in there. We, as the board, made a decision to not come back until a little bit later in January. And I said that to my daughter, and she said, "Oh, no." She was so upset by that decision because it was so difficult, and seeing how the difficulties of what it was like for our kids, not just my own personal, but other kids during that time, and doing what was in their best interest in trying to give them those supports, but then again, the next step for our staff of keeping them safe. Many of them then had family that were sick that they had to take care of. Like, what is it, the decisions that we make to the best of our ability that is to the benefit of everybody involved? And that is where my heart comes from and my decisions.
Thank you. What is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools, and how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
Well, I'm going to read this, and I'm going to rip myself out, not just my husband and others, but that part of this vision has stayed with me for a very long time, so I'm still going to read it because it really holds true. I thought about, what is my vision? And I've said this before, my brain doesn't do well, I'm not going to do good about telling you about the physical changes, right? My vision is for this district to have a thriving school system and community that is rich in diversity of ideas, of experiences, and people who cohesively work together, providing an education and set of skills that allow the people to go out into the world and be useful, productive, and open to the world and those that they encounter because they had a safe, supportive, engaging education and community that they are or were a part of in Schwartz Creek. And I think that to be able to help make that vision possible as well is that we have, our district continues to focus on improving academic achievement with curriculum alignment, continuing to hire outstanding teachers, that we, I'm going to jump around for a hot second, that our bond projects finish on time and in budget, and they contribute to our district being vibrant with student and community activity. That our district is able to not only celebrate our scholars and their academic achievement, but also our athletes and whatever extracurricular activities our students are participating in, that we're able to celebrate those and highlight those as well. And I really believe in our district remaining financially stable and responsible, and I think that in my time on the board here, that I think I was a good steward of that. And I will say that one of the last things that I said in my comments, and I think it's important to say at this moment, is that importantly, it's a shared vision. It's not just about what Jessica's vision is. I can help influence as a board member. It's not power and control. It's about how do we work together and grow together? In growing together, I will grow individually, we'll grow together as a board. This, like, I want to foster an administration, whether it remains Mr. Kitchen or not, at the helm, that I'm fostering growth for everybody where we can work together and be a cohesive community. We may not, I will say this, and I'm going to jump back, and this was part of my second question answer, that I appreciate, we're not always going to get along, we're not always going to agree, we're going to have difficult times. It's not like I'm not familiar with having difficult experiences and conversations on this board. I get for me, a lot of times, I like, I can avoid confrontation, but I am definitely willing to have difficult conversations. And I will do my best always, and I think that I've shown that in these past years, that I will listen and try to understand and be cooperative and collaborate because I think that's how we move forward as a district. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is it really it? Oh, can I say one more thing? I just want to say thank you to everybody and their perspective and shared vision tonight as candidates. It's really inspiring to sit here and hear all the candidates so far. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jessica. Thanks for being here. Okay, next, we have Mr. Don Ludwig.
Hello. Don Ludwig, 5141, Monday Township. Been a resident now for, I don't know, 16 years. My wife's family's been here. I know I'm jumping ahead of myself, but I just want to know how this score system's going to gonna work, because I thought it was going to be more of a yes or no. Will the candidates be able to see how you rate me? Is that like 1 through 10? Or is it 1 through 5? I'm just, because I might pull my application if it's not a fair system. So I'm not understanding the point system, is what I'm trying to say.
The top two people are identified.
How do we get to the top two people?
We have a sheet with the questions on it.
Okay.
And there's an opportunity, this is, it's a guide for the board members. They don't have to necessarily use it, and there's no direction other than one is the lowest, three is the higher evaluation for each question, and overall, they can use that to help them along the way. And the quality of answer points scores one to three.
Okay.
And no one's obligated to use that assessment. For some folks, and with the number of people we have that are interviewing, it may be helpful to them.
Because that's how I feel, if it's a point system.
The final two individuals that will be identified, there's a point, there's weighting to whether you're number one or number two. If that answers your question.
Yeah, so there's points between one and three, correct? Is this basically how you can score me?
It's an evaluation worksheet, is all it is.
Because I just want to make sure it's fair, because I know there's a lot of people that don't like me and people that do like me and whatnot, and I just want it to be fair. And I applied for this job or this position because I didn't know, I didn't think anybody else would. I don't just care about the kids, I care about the 80-year-old woman too, that's graduated from the school district. So I just want to make sure that we're all treated equally and fairly and, you know, that we put our differences aside, and we can do that, so.
So are you ready to answer questions?
Yes.
Okay. Please tell us about your background and experiences and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
I don't have a strong background. I was in trades my whole life. I have suffered two brain aneurysms, as you guys probably know. I don't read or write or type very well. That's why I said I would, when I sent my questions back, I would just go from the heart. And the strongest point that would benefit Schwartz Creek for me to say is, I was a director for hockey at Mount Clemens for four years, and we had a board and everything, you know, we did really well, and we figured out ways to work together, ways not to work together. So then I moved here to Schwartz Creek with my wife. I've been with the Schwartz Creek Youth Softball Program since my daughter started until she, I was even assistant coach here for the middle school as she finished her eighth grade, so now she's going into 10th grade. Very good with the students, very good with the kids. Ultimately, it's just about doing the right thing. I want to be transparent, and if you want to know what I did for a living, it was collision work. I mean, if you smash your car, I can fix it, so that's what I did. And then I had to retire after the brain aneurysms.
Okay. All right. Thank you. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students in the district. What does this mean to you?
Well, that means everything to me. I would say the students would have to come first. I can put my differences aside. I'd like to be told the truth, have a debate, have great conversations. You guys all obviously know how I feel about the school, I'm not gonna, the elementary school, I'm not gonna lie, I don't want them to sell until there's a buyer. But I can look the other way, because I do not want the kids to go to school with a manufacturing plant there. I also don't want the kids to go to a school that's by contaminated, say Berlin and Farrell. So that's where I would have to make the decision when the time would be right for a buyer to sell that school. I hope I'm making sense, I don't know if I am or if I'm just babbling. I want the best from kindergarten until your retirement, just not for the kids. I want it for everybody, for our community, if that makes sense. I feel like, you know, I'm a community-type person.
Okay. Thank you. All right. What is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools and how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
Well, I guess, one, for being a Level Four hockey coach, bringing my skills for communication to kids and students. I was big on making them give me their report card, if it was Bs are better for you to play. So that would be my vision, would be to bring up our Schwartz Creek Community School scaling system, because I've been, you know, since I applied for this, I've been looking at some of the ratings, and I see that we're very low, our school district's low, we're ranked, I don't know, in the 400s out of 600 schools, and that's concerning to me. I would like to see that get a lot better. I think I'm a people person, I can communicate with others, I can have a civil discussion, or we can argue. It's however things work, but ultimately, it's, like I said, it's for the kindergartners to the 80-year-old woman that graduated from Schwartz Creek is how I feel.
Thank you. Sue, how much time?
Four minutes.
Okay, so this is your opportunity to wrap it up, if you'd like.
Okay. With that being said, that's really all I have to say, is I'm just here for the community, and that's why I applied. I just thought if we needed somebody, I'd do it. I'm here to help, and if I'm right or wrong, then that's how it is, so. I appreciate the time, I thank you for giving me the chance, and I appreciate the opportunity. I didn't even really look into what a trustee even does, to be honest with you. I don't know if it's a paid position, if it's not. If it was, I've already told Schwartz Creek softball coach, because I figured it was just gonna be me, I didn't know I was gonna have a fight against a strong candidate. I would just donate the money back to the school. So that's where I come from, is the heart, so that's how I feel, so. I guess that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Okay. Next, we have Mr. Michael Ofsenek. Hello, Michael.
Hello.
Tell me when you're ready.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Please tell us about your background and experiences and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
So my name is Michael Ofsenek. I did not grow up in Schwartz Creek, I actually grew up north in Midland. I was a Chemick, not a Charger, is really important to me, although that mascot is pretty awful compared to Dragon, I must say. Chemick doesn't really make any sense to anyone, it's from like the 1930s. But we moved here in 2008 when my wife and I wanted to find a spot for our kids to grow up. It was between Lansing, where I worked, and Auburn Hills, where she worked, so we chose Schwartz Creek, it's easy access to the highway. We live in a subdivision off Landon Road by Andrea, and we have loved our time here. My background, my work background is in healthcare. I went to Central Michigan University. I work at Covenant Healthcare in Saginaw. I'm a strategic planning analyst, so in daily work, people, directors, executives, vice presidents in the hospital will ask me, you know, what would it look like if we were to purchase this $2 million piece of equipment? What would we need to do? What would our doctors think about it? That kind of thing. So I have a strong analytical background. Not only, you know, what are the questions being asked, but maybe what are the questions that are not being asked about certain things that go on. I'm also the, recently been promoted to the Regional Commissioner of Schwartz Creek AYSO, because nobody else wanted to do it. So that is our community soccer program. On Facebook, you'll see all kinds of travel programs everywhere that cost thousands and thousands of dollars. We take everyone, we take most, most of our people in our Schwartz Creek AYSO are from Schwartz Creek, they're in our schools here, and they love our program. We usually have about 300 players that play in it, from three-year-olds all the way up to 15-year-olds. And we provide students, we are very proud that in the last few years, we have been building our program enough where our players are going from AYSO rec soccer onto our high school soccer teams, and we are very proud of that. Just this last year, I coached, I coached my son and my daughter's teams, and I coached a student, and he was actually from Mount Morris, and he was the nicest kid. He would send me emails during the week about the games that we had and what he thought about it. Like, I don't know how he got my email address, but he decided at the end of the season that he didn't want to go to Mount Morris for ninth grade, he wanted to go to Schwartz Creek for ninth grade, just because of the experience and the friends that he made, and so he applied here, and last I knew, he has been accepted as an incoming freshman to the high school. So shows you not only how great our AYSO program is, but how attractive Schwartz Creek is to people, they want to come here, he wanted to come here, he wanted to be with his friends that he met at soccer and have a good time. I would like to further improve our schools, because I feel like I bring the point of view of a parent. My daughter is 10 and my son is 13. He's going into eighth grade in the fall, she'll be in fifth grade in the fall. So I hear about pretty much everything that goes on, as much as I can get out of them at school. I read all the newsletters that are sent out. My wife works in the school, she worked at Elms Road for a number of years as the, I believe it was Behavioral Coach was her title. And in this fall, she's going to work at the Virtual Learning Center at the middle school. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next question, but my strong analytical background is the biggest thing that I think I would bring to any board.
Thank you, sir. All right. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for your students in the district. What does this mean to you?
So I wrote a whole thing, but I think things that I was thinking about, examples that I was thinking about, would be, a few years ago, there was a question about Gaines Elementary and should we keep it open? What are the benefits? What are the costs? What are the? And to me, just from a layperson who wasn't on the board, listening to all the discussion, reading about everything, to me, it felt like Gaines Elementary was such a valuable asset to that community, that even though declining enrollments and costs, et cetera, et cetera, we, in my opinion, we had to keep it open, because if we didn't, those kids would have a really rough time finding anywhere else to go. And so in my mind, I was thinking, if Gaines stays open, it may draw finances away from the schools that my own kids go to. My kids are in classes with 30 kids in that class. My understanding is that's not necessarily an experience at other schools. And so that's kind of an example of where it wouldn't be, it wouldn't help my experience for my children, but it would help the experience for other students out there, because we don't want them to have to bus 30 minutes to go somewhere else or something like that. Regarding my wife's position, she's a, she'll be at the Virtual Learning Center. If there was any question about, you know, a decision on something like that where her job might be involved, I would rescind myself or sequester, I don't even know, I don't remember what the right word is, I wrote it in here, but I wouldn't take part in the vote if it affected her job. She's not working there to pay our mortgage or anything like that, she's working there because it's convenient for our timing and she can give my kids rides after school. She could do a lot better if she was using her, you know, her degree, so I'm not worried about anything like that and that kind of thing.
Thank you, sir. All right. And finally, before your wrap-up, is what is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools and how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life? And I should ask Sue for a time shot. Thank you, Sue.
One minute thirty.
Okay, I'll go fast, sorry. So I want our school system to be the best school system in Genesee County. That is a small attainable goal, I think, for us. I want, I have a number of different things that I think are very important. We need to work on bullying in our schools, we need to retain and attract the best quality staff. We've had a lot of turnover at the principal level, at our elementary schools, and our high school, and other places. We need to work on that and figure out why that's happening, how can we keep these people? Because it's not, it's not only rough for the kids to have a new principal, who many of these kids interact with the principal many times every single day, but if, it's also rough for the staff who have to work there and get a new principal and a new principal and a new principal, so we need to figure that out. Improving and updating our aging school facilities, many of our schools are very old, we need to make sure that they're still standing. Creating better programs at the elementary level for gifted students, I think that is one thing that we haven't worked on so much that we definitely should. Improving our safety procedures, making every student and staff member feel welcome. And then, I really want to involve parents more in education. I think when I, when I think about a lot of the problems that parents and kids have with school, I feel like maybe some of them are because the parents either don't know or haven't made a good relationship with people that work in the school, and I think we need to involve our parents more and our students more into that decision-making and all of those processes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Vicki Sturgis.
Good evening.
Hi.
How is everyone doing tonight?
Good.
I guess I'm ready.
Good. That's all I need to know. Are you ready, Sue? Okay, thank you. Please tell us about your background and experiences and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
Okay. Well, my name is Vicki Sturgis, and I've lived here most of my life. My background consists of being a resident at my current address in Derwig Drive. I'm growing up here in Winchester Village. I attended Baker College and obtained a degree in management and marketing. I have 10 years of managerial experience in interviewing and the hiring processes. I currently serve on the Schwartz Creek Planning Commission, which brings experience working together on a board, sharing ideas and brainstorming and as a group. I wish to participate in the selection of the superintendent for our schools, if I may.
Okay. That was all on that one? Okay. All right. Thank you. As a board member, sorry, I should have memorized that by now, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students in the district. What does that mean to you?
Well, as a board member, what is best for the students in the district would be the top priority. Statistics have proven that parents choose a school district by their reputation, and they strive to flock to top-achieving schools, districts in the state, when they choose a home. And parents want to raise their children in a safe and supportive community, but I want each student to know their full potential and to understand that a good education is important to them and to their future.
Thank you very much. All right. What is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools and how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
Okay. My vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools is connecting my skill set and leadership with my roles as a member of the City of the Schwartz Creek Planning Commission with a board member of the Schwartz Creek Community Schools to create a top-notch school district in a thriving community. I see the potential of higher achievement here, and I want to know and study what the top-achieving school districts in our state are doing. And I would like to see some of those practices tried and successfully implemented here, and I want to see academic improvement to a higher margin, especially in math and reading. I want to see more options offered to the students in skilled trades, as these careers are hot and in great demand. I want to learn and work with the Schwartz Creek Board of Education to make good things happen here.
Thank you. Sue, how much time?
Minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Four more minutes to babble on?
It's up to you if you'd like to wrap up.
You know what? I, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna take that time. I just, I know time is of the essence tonight, so I've said all that I can say, I guess.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next, we have Andrew Wilson. Hello, Andrew.
Hello.
All right. Let me know when you're ready. Are you, let me know when you're ready.
I am ready.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Please tell us about your background and experiences and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
Thank you. Yes, my name's Andrew Wilson. I've been a resident here in Schwartz Creek for just over 10 years, I believe. My wife is a teacher here in the district. For my career, I just graduated with my MBA from U of M Flint. Before that, I was a computer programmer. I went to U of M Ann Arbor. And before that, I was a, I worked intelligence in the Air Force for five years. So, I think that the combination of my just business and numbers sense is useful in any sort of managing capacity when you're dealing with budgets and that sort of thing. But I think the reason that I'm interested in the school board position is that my adoptive daughter was orphaned when she was in high school here in Schwartz Creek. And so, she got a lot of support from the staff and the admins and she was able to graduate on time, with skin of her teeth. And I think that some of those support programs are hard to quantify and hard to measure in certain ways. But I think that it is a strength of the district to have both the staff that we have and I want to make sure that our schools are done in a sustainable and keep that compassionate way.
Thank you for that. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students and the district. What does that mean to you?
Well, like I said, I am the husband of a teacher in the district, so I would be abstaining from direct votes on like the union contracts. Just makes sense. But apart from that, I think, when I was in the Air Force, I had a top-secret security clearance, so I know what it is to keep my mouth shut about stuff that I'm not supposed to be sharing. I don't know how much information the school board gets that would be sensitive in that way, but you never know. On top of that, uh, yeah, I guess that's about that. Oh, and I guess I would say, my time in the Air Force also, sort of, I'm used to, in a way, putting the mission first and I know what that means and I know what it means to be a manager. And yeah, it's straightforward.
Thank you and thank you for your service. All right. What is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools and how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
I would like to see Schwartz Creek play to its strengths as a small town and a small schools district. And I think that that sense of community where the school is such a big part of the community here in Schwartz Creek, and I think that that is really special. And I think that that can be a really good draw to people to come to the district, both through things like school of choice and just moving to the district to be here. I think that we have a wonderful community. And I think that that sense of, that small town is a strength that I'm not sure is being utilized right. And I would like to see how we can improve things, just like on the numerical side, some of the scores and other things to draw in more people, which is obviously a very complicated question and a lot of converging factors, which I think specifically my experience in education in like logistics and supply chain. I'm used to dealing with complex systems for that. Like I said, I was a computer programmer. I'm used to figuring out how all of these pieces come together and I think that that is one of my strengths. I am also someone who, I am not hot-headed at all. I can, I'm used to interacting with people from all walks of life and I like to think that I get along pretty well with most people, even if I am on my own, tend to be fairly shy and introverted, but I do get along with people and I think that that's important when dealing with a public position and also one where even like earlier, earlier this evening, some of the regulatory or so we say, like the procedural aspect of it, I think is very important in terms of like transparency, but it's something that is, I don't know, oddly satisfying for me in a way and something that I do take some enjoyment from, that I think goes well towards this.
Thank you. How much time, Sue?
Three minutes.
Okay. Your three minutes if you'd like to wrap up.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you. The quality of candidates has been very reassuring to me, just as someone in the community. And so, I'm happy to see what you guys determine. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. All right. And finally, we have Jennifer, also Jenny Wogas. Same person. Hi, Jenny.
Good afternoon or evening. I'm just gonna set my own timer real quick. I just, I know kinda what's going on too.
Okay.
So, I can tell myself a little bit.
You are set?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. Please tell us about your background and experiences and why you would like to serve in the capacity of trustee for the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education.
Okay. First of all, I'm gonna apologize because the answers that I put on this sheet are very short because I was envisioning you guys reading my cover letter and reading my resume and then getting this and being like, I read the same thing three times, yay. So, I tried to make this a little bit different and I shortened it and so it's very abbreviated. So, I will go expand on this a little bit more. So, if you're trying to follow along on this, I may jump in back and forth, so I apologize.
It's your choice.
I apologize in advance if you're jumping. So, basically, yeah, my name's Jenny. I've lived in this, I moved up to Schwartz Creek about 20 years ago. I grew up metro Detroit area, so very different environment from Schwartz Creek. I was newly married and my husband was working more towards Lansing and so, again, that was working up in Hills, he was Lansing, met in the middle, you know, and we just, we just loved it here, you know, and we had a daughter. And so, she attended, she started out Moorish, she went to middle school, she's currently in 10th grade. So, you know, I've definitely been around, I've had experience with many of the schools here, so that's kinda helped. So, my professional background, I'm definitely more of a technical kind of a person. I did like tech support, like fix your computer, reboot it first kind of thing for a long time. And then I kinda moved more into working with data and that's kind of my strength is taking big ugly groups of data and making it make sense for executives. And so, that's definitely something that I can bring to the table. I'm very good at kind of pulling a story out of complex-looking situations. I have an associate's in computer programming. I have a bachelor at, from Baker College, both from Baker College. My bachelor's degree is in project management and planning, so that was something I'm really, I really wanted to get into a lot was managing projects. Just kind of, you know, seeing the big picture and helping keep everything on track, keep it on time, keep it on budget, make sure everybody's being utilized to their capacity and just making, and making sure communication is happening as well because communication is a huge part of managing projects. So, those are some of the professional skills I bring. I've also had extensive volunteer background, you know, once my daughter was enrolled in school and was in school, any of the class trips, any of the field trips, you know, no comes home, you want help? Yep, yep, I'll come help. So, that's, I definitely had that experience. My daughter also participated in a project or in a program called Odyssey of the Mind. I know it's not real familiar to a lot of people and I don't know, we kinda backed, the district kinda backed out of participating in that, but it's an amazing program that really encourages kids to use critical thinking skills to solve problems, not just learning, you know, memorizing facts. It's really utilizing your brain and thinking outside the box. And so, I had the privilege of coaching three different teams. And again, it's, it's very comp, it's difficult as a coach because you specifically can't tell them the answers. You have to teach them how to think about it for themselves. So, that was one thing that I really enjoyed. And then I've also, I'm very active. I coach a run club with a CREAM organization. I've been doing that for six years. So, and again, I'm still doing that. My daughter aged out of it, I'm still coaching. And so, I've also, I have some board experience as well. So, my daughter and I ride with Ann Arbor Velo Club down in Ann Arbor area. They had a great youth program, so we drove down to Ann Arbor on a regular basis. And so, they didn't have anybody on their board that was really speaking for the youth. They had a very strong youth program and then the board wasn't making decisions in the best interest of the youth. So, I joined the board to speak up for the youth. And same thing with Greater Flynn Athletic Club, they're a local club, but again, you know, nobody was there to speak for the youth. So, you know, I needed another board position like home head at the time, but there was nobody to speak for the youth. And so, I felt that as somebody who had a youth that was participating in these activities, it was, you know, kinda my obligation to jump in and try to help. And so, that's kind of, that's what led me to apply here. I wasn't sure how many people would apply. I knew that, you know, I have a lot of strong analytical background, I have experience working on boards, and I have experience working in a lot of these schools and with the youth and I've known, you know, gotten to know some of the parents. And so, I figured that would be an asset to this position.
Thanks, Jenny. All right. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, and your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students and the district. What does that mean to you?
So, I had a really short answer here and I think I'm gonna stick with a short answer here for, as well. So, basically, my response here was, doing the right thing for the district and the students is the primary objective of the board. I fully understand that. I would not have put myself forward as a candidate if I didn't think that I could absolutely meet that obligation. The district, the students, the community, that's the top priority, not myself.
Thank you. All right. What is your vision for the future of Schwartz Creek Community Schools and how do you see your skill set and leadership helping this vision come to life?
Okay, so, I want Schwartz Creek Community Schools to be a local leader in student education and in safety. So, that's been my job is to find the best solution for the problems. People come to me with problems, I kinda mull it over. If I have an answer, I answer it. If I need to reach out to other people, I reach out to other people. That's just something I've always enjoyed doing, problem-solving, doing things like that. So, one of, so I've spoken with a lot of parents, there's a lot of parents that are happy here, there's a lot of parents that have moved out. I know parents that have moved their students out of the district. I know why they moved them out of the district. There are some, there are some gaps in the district with communication with parents. I don't know that, some of it is issues where there's new policies that probably need to go into place. Some of it is just closing those communication gaps. Parents don't understand what's going on, so they don't trust it. So, I really think my ability to speak to different people at their level, listen to them first and understand where they're coming from, so that when I'm speaking with them, I'm addressing their concerns and I'm giving them an answer that can help them. So, I think that that's something that I could bring and that's something that I think it would be important, is just a better relationship with the parents and the community, just so that there's a good level of trust between everybody.
Thanks, Jenny. How much time, Sue?
Forty-five minutes, seconds.
Okay. So, there's your time for wrap-up, Jenny. You get extra.
I want to thank all of you for your time, for listening. I'll thank everybody who is here. There's amazing candidates and you guys have a very difficult decision. And so, I'm very happy that you guys have a difficult decision because you do have so many strong candidates. And so, I just, I wish you good luck. I would not wanna, I'm glad I'm sitting here right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny. So, we're gonna take a five, five-minute restroom break. So we're going to take a five, five-minute restroom break.[260.83]
Thank you. Yours is the same?
This is mine.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, I asked Sue and Andrea to also keep track so that we have three people. All right. It appears that I'll read each candidate and their votes, points. Okay? You can tell me if I missed anything. All right. Jessica Lanave has five points. Ken Engel has seven. Michael Ossonek has three. And Jenny Walgast has three, correct? All right. It appears by my math, our math, that's been validated by three board members, that Ken Engel has the most points. Any comments or questions from the board before I ask for a motion? Not hearing any? You good, Sue? Yes? Oh, I'm getting the look. Right. So I'm going to read the resolution. All right. Whereas a vacancy has been caused on this Board of Education by reason of resignation, and whereas this Board of Education has by law the authority to fill a vacancy for the unexpired term thereof, now therefore be it resolved by a majority vote of all the remaining members of the Board of Education of Swartz Creek Community School District that Ken Engel be and thereby is appointed to serve as a member of the Board of Education of this school district for the unexpired term of Holly Jarvis, ending on December 31st, 2026. And now Sue, can you do a roll call, please?
Andrea Fick.
Point of order, Madam President.
Go ahead.
Is it to the end of Holly's term or to the next election cycle to fill out Holly's term?
It should be my last.
Well, I'm just, okay, I'm just, once again, I want to read it and make sure it's right.
Her term ended in December 31st, 2026.
Okay, thank you.
That's the next election.
Election. Okay, sorry.
So she said 2028, I believe. Okay.
We have to follow the state's election guidance. Did you have a question? Andrea? I thought I heard you say you had a question. Sue?
Yeah, exactly. Now it's an issue. Okay.
I'm not understanding.
A yes.
Thank you. Kim Winter?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
That's seven yes. Thank you very much. And thanks to all of you. Congratulations, Ken.
Doesn't he have to come shake hands like the teachers do? I think he should. Said you should come up here and shake hands like the teachers do. Absolutely, in front of everyone.
Thanks to all of you who were candidates for this position. We are grateful for your intention to serve this district, and I hope that you will continue doing that in some capacity or many capacities, as I know that most people who are doing work around the district, you can't stop them. I know my husband would tell you that I'm serving and I can't stop. So, but it's a good thing, and it's a good thing for our students. Thank you for everyone who came forward, and we hope to see you again. There are other opportunities within the district that might not even be available now, that I hope that when they become available, you might consider serving on a committee or a board. I know, Michael, you've had that experience with the bond, others with just serving at your own kids' school and sports and everything. So thank you for all you do, and please continue doing that. And with that, there's an opportunity for public comments for anyone who'd like to address the board. Please step forward, state your name, and three minutes or less, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer State, and I just have two quick things. So I'd just like to find out, when is he going to be sworn in? And then my second question I'd like to pose to the board is, I think being that this was such a tedious task for you, maybe you should look at your policies and procedures and adopt a long-term plan.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sudeshaw. I'm from Swartz Creek, Gaines Township. I'm here to discuss the school, Moorish. The last two and a half years, my group and I have done extensive research on the chip fab. This project impacts all five townships: Flint, Gaines, Clayton, Swartz Creek City, and Mundy. As of today, there obviously is no application issued for this site. However, everything is still going to proceed, demolition, school, everything, from what I was told. And the FGEA and the governor are going to continue to actively look specifically for a chip manufacturing. Depending on the chip's size and use, they require 500 to 1,700 different toxic chemicals a day. These consist of acids, bases, gases, solvents, and dopants. They also use what is called secret ingredients. Companies protect specific chemicals as trade secrets, making it difficult to fully assess potential risks. Chip manufacturing involves complex processes and hazardous materials, making safety a constant concern. Accidents can and have occurred due to various factors, such as toxic water spills, chemical explosions, fires, equipment failure, and human error. If we look at Hemlock, they have had hydraulic acid release, chloric saline vapor leaks, which close a facility, placing the town in shelter in place. A Praxair truck carrying hydrogen exploded where town residents heard and felt five miles away. Also, chemical deliveries will come via rail, air, and trucks, all coming into residential communities. Railway accidents, East Palestine, Ohio; Van Buren Township, Detroit, Springfield, Ohio; and then in December of '24, the Flint antifreeze spill into the Flint River. All of these carry significant implication to residents, let alone a school. I spoke with Tyler from the FGEA, and we have agreed, is that my three minutes?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
We have agreed that he can't say there won't be an issue any more than I can say that there will be, but the odds are not on his side. There is an organization out of California, the Chips Community United. Their research shows numerous chips issues, if, it's not if, but it's a when. Moorish and Hill is only one mile from this mega site and less than two miles from Berlin and Farrell. For years, I have heard talk of combining Gaines and Moorish Elementary, building a new school. Here is the opportunity. Placing it central, at least five miles away from the mega site, this could be the only silver lining that comes from this. I have spoke with a few farmers that have centralized property across streets. Of course, I wasn't given a yea or nay, but a consideration of factors. Land being used for solar panels and industrial is not as welcome as a community coming together for the sake of the children. As a school board, you have an enormous responsibility and decisions to make of the safety and the well-being of the kids. I do not envy you at all. But this school needs serious consideration as to location for the new school, as far away from this mess as you can possibly make it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Jessica Lanave, and I know that I went over on my eight minutes by a sliver, so first I apologize. Second, to finish that, thank you so much for your diligence and concern for our community. And I was really hearing what all of the candidates had to say, is to encourage you to continue to reach out. Each of these board members, their email address is the first letter of their name and their last name at SWCRK.org. And there, I appreciate that you continue to be open to hear perspectives and ideas in the communities and to foster then that engagement, because there are a lot of amazing ideas out here tonight, and to keep people engaged to continue to make that grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
My name is Shirley Burchette. The semiconductor industry has a well-documented history, starting in Silicon Valley, of polluting the environment, harming workers, as well as community residents. Fifty years later, these sites are so contaminated, they are still being cleaned up. Now, this industry is being fast-tracked back into the United States with billions of taxpayer incentives. Semiconductor manufacturers use PFAS extensively. This is an industry of unregulated and unmonitored toxic PFAS, and is heavily lobbied to keep it this way, all the while emitting tons of greenhouse gas emissions. As the Flint and Genesee Economic Alliance markets, purchases, and prepares the Mundy Township Advanced Manufacturing District with millions of state and federal money, OSHA and the EPA are undermanned and underfunded with limited rules and regulations for this industry. The very safeguards needed to protect the water, air, land, wildlife, residents, and the children of Genesee County are outdated. There is a school siting guideline document the EPA provides to help communities make informed decisions on school locations, especially when considering potential environmental and health concerns. Children are more vulnerable to environmental exposures because their responses to toxic substances, both in severity and in the nature of the adverse effect, can differ markedly from those of adults. Children breathe more air, drink more water, and eat more food per kilogram of body weight than adults. Children's behaviors, such as hand-to-mouth contact, also make them more susceptible to environmental hazards, especially hazards in soil and dust. Children experience periods of growth and development which can be adversely affected by exposures to toxic substances. These are just a few of the principles behind these guidelines. Before any final decisions are made, I would encourage this board to explore these types of guidelines to assist in making a decision. Our children are the future. Ensuring the health and safety of our schools and our community is a must, and you are in a position to please do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Anyone else?
Jenny Walgast, I've met up here before. I just wanted to say thank you again for your time for this. Congratulations to Ken, very well deserved. So I'll just say this, it seems like this group, this team, has communication issues. Speaking with Tyler after the meeting yesterday, he said that, you know, he'd been in communication, because my big concern was that he was really pushing you guys, like giving you the short deadline. He's known since last year, or since 2023 that all of this was coming on, and you guys are just getting thrown into this loop and with a quick turnaround time. He's like, well, I've been talking to Rod all this whole time, and I just assumed that he was looping in the whole board. So it sounds like that you guys really, really need to communicate better. So I know, Jim, you're kind of stepping into this role, and you're getting thrown right into the fire. So I would just, as a community member, as a parent, please, if you guys need to go to a workshop and work on your team skills, so that the superintendent feels comfortable and confident sharing information with every single member of the board, and when there's like big presentations like this, making sure that every single member of the board is present. I feel, I felt horrible for Autumn yesterday because she was nowhere to be found, and we had all this good information that was coming out, and Autumn was completely left out of it. I left here thinking, wow, how can she come to this, you know, an informed decision like the rest of you guys without access to that information? So, you know, as a community member, as a parent, please, you know, if there's something that you guys can do, if there's an outside organization that you can engage with or something like that, just to try to make sure that you're working together for us. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all right. Next on our agenda, we have comments and questions from the board. Who wants to start?
I just want to say thank you to all of the candidates. It was extremely overwhelming, very, very good candidates. I'm reading through your resumes, reading through your answers in advance of tonight, was a lot. I'm a very personal, like I wanted to hear the words come out of your mouth, so that helped actually change maybe some predefined things I even had, reading resumes. It's not the same. Listening to people speak is volumes compared to what they write, in my opinion. So I appreciate all of you for stepping up and putting yourself out there. You know, somebody mentioned they didn't think anybody would want this job, and after how we started, I can't blame them, but whatever. Anyways, on that note, Ken, you know what you're getting into, Jessica's been on the board. You know, I almost wondered, prefacing this with, starting tonight before people fill out the application, if people truly understand that we do more than just a regular monthly board meeting. Some months, we have two regular board meetings. But a lot of decisions are made there, but the meat of what we do, the information that we get, is at the meetings, like you mentioned yesterday. Jenny, those are subcommittee meetings. I don't always make them. Kim didn't make it yesterday either. Sometimes it is, you know, not on everybody's agenda, we have jobs that pay us, that we can't always make the subcommittee meetings, but there is one for finance, operations, policy and procedure, and academic achievement. So, what's that? And the bond. So five meetings, roughly five hours a month, that we have before we get to the board meeting, and a lot of conversation happens in those meetings, and they are public. Every time we get up here and have our board meeting, we recap our meeting notes, and we talk about the public comment. So everyone is welcome to come to those meetings, and I encourage you all, especially if you didn't get the position on the board, my decision was very heavily weighted on people who had board experience, right, and they weren't all school board, the people that know what they're getting into, because we have so many big decisions to make, possibly selling a building, hiring a new superintendent, in the day-to-day. It makes a difference if you really know what you're getting into. So I encourage you, if you applied for this and didn't get it, to come to our subcommittee meetings. Come to one a month, come to something, come to the board meetings, so that you see what we really face, and the things that we, the information we get, and how we make those decisions at the board meetings. So, that's all.
Thanks, Andrea. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to ask again if the subcommittees can be made at a time that I can attend. Like, think of us three times on that one, too.
Okay?
There should be some room for squiggle room, because when Alyssa came in, she couldn't make it on Mondays. We'd had it for seven years, and that was nice enough to change the meeting to accommodate her schedule, and I think that that would be the beginning of some cooperation. So we all need to get together and do that, and I believe that subcommittee meetings, which people have been against in the past, should be tape-recorded or livestreamed. So people, and I know that's going to cause Travis a lot of work, but we only have, really only two subcommittee meetings, because they're back-to-back, and I think the most important one right now is operations, and I think it would have been beneficial for people to hear us talk about tearing down a school and building a new school yesterday, and that would have been, people could at least refer back to that. And I've been a proponent of that for seven years, but I understand that there might be some technical difficulties, but I think that we should try to make an attempt, at least in the time being, to tape-record those and put them on YouTube for complete 100% transparency, because a lot of people can't make those meetings. And as you said, Jenny, you were here yesterday, and you saw all the information that was given out, that 36,000 people didn't hear in the Swartz Creek District. That's what we have about in our district, 36,000 to 38,000, with the five municipalities that we cover. That's, I know, and thank everybody for coming. It was a tough choice. Thank you.
So you're not going to entertain the thought of moving those, so more of the board can make it, or?
So what time, I mean, we did all this in January. We compromised.
Yeah, I was there.
Right.
Yeah.
So Autumn, why don't you let us know your availability?
I have. Well, I've let Carrie know. I get out of work at 3:45. I can be here by 4:00.
You sent that to me today?
I sent it to you two months ago, too.
Okay, excuse me. You know when you're working. Let the people here who do the scheduling, so they can share that with us, so that we can then have conversations about what works for other folks. Okay? All right.
I mean, me personally, I can't give up three nights in a month, because I work in the evenings. So it's a, Carrie and I, our meeting tomorrow morning is at 8:00 AM, right? So it's a compromise, and I know with academic achievement, we need to have that one when the teachers are here. So, I mean, it's kind of hard to accommodate everybody, but we do have to also accommodate the teachers with academic achievement, because they're typically the presenters. So asking them to start a meeting at 4:00 isn't really fair to them.
I think it can be adjusted, so.
We did do that in the past. We had academic achievement at 4:00.
But to echo the comment, we rely on administrators and teachers to come and present to us, and we need to have them available to do that.
Well, hopefully Autumn and you guys can work something out. My building an operations committee, I can move it back to 4:00 to help Autumn out if she can be there, but that would be up to Alyssa, because she would have to be in charge of finance. Myself, operations, we could back it back an hour, so maybe she could make at least one of the meetings. I think that's a fair request.
For sure.
For all people. So Sue, you can work with Autumn to get her availability, maybe, and then people can look at their calendars?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I think that at some point, we can talk to Jessica and see if, I mean, for me, I didn't mean Jessica. No, I meant you, Andrea. Obviously, we have to have the policy meeting when you're available, because you are the chair. I was just wondering if we could move it to, and maybe this is not even enough time to talk about it, maybe, I know we have it the third Thursday of every month, I just wondered if we could move it to a different Thursday during the month. That's all.
Yeah, move it to the back, see when it correlates, if it gets tomorrow morning, so it's a Thursday before the board meeting.
Yeah, it always, it always is, yeah.
And I know it was a request of. The staff, actually, of us moving that to an earlier, so more staff could come over from the buildings. It'd be a morning meeting instead of how previous it was in the afternoon, and that was a staff request. So, but yeah, we could, I would have to look at that and see.
Well, maybe.
When we do the Thursday falls on.
Yeah, maybe Chuck's suggestion of at least recording them or something, so we can watch what happened.
That would, that would be fair.
For me, that would be helpful.
Yeah, if they're attending one of them, I felt like I got a lot more information than is presented during the regular board meeting, in the subcommittee meeting, so at least, yeah.
The minutes are just a recap.
Right.
And policy and procedure really only needs one or two people, and that would be Mr. Kitchen and Mr. Simonson, the Human Resource Director. We don't need teachers so much in a policy meeting. Maybe the union representative for the teachers that may want to do it, but why in policy and procedures, you have Jim and Dave, and they are both here to 5:00 every afternoon? And maybe the union representative would be the other person, right, sometimes?
Well, they could be invited.
Yeah, they could be invited, and really don't need anybody else as occasional principal. And I would be more than happy to start sitting on the policy and procedure meetings, maybe we get some of this stuff wired out, because I don't read it all the time, it's a book this thick, and maybe that might be a little better to go back in the afternoons for policy and procedure. I don't know, Andrea, if that's too late for if you did it at 3:30, 4:00. I'm going to do three meetings back-to-back to accommodate people, so if me and Alyssa and you could get together, and maybe leave academic achievement for Ms. Carrie to do during the day, because the school teachers are here, that would be a reasonable request, I think. But you guys discuss it. I'm going to work with whatever you guys want for your scheduling. I'll change my schedule.
I said we talk about Monday, between now and Monday, the board meeting. We can cross out some ideas.
Maybe come up with some ideas between now and then.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, anyone else? I want to thank everyone again. I know you've heard it multiple times, and thank you for commitment to the district and to our candidates. I sincerely thank you for coming forward. We've learned a lot about you today. We know where you are, if we need to get somebody on a board or on a committee, and we will have opportunities, we do have opportunities that come up. So thank you for being here tonight, for your patience, and with that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, and also there's a new bond committee, so civilians can, we forgot to mention that, you said some committees. Right, 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 but the bond, I mean, if somebody wants to come to the bond committee or maybe volunteer, get ahold of Mr. Kitchen or Ms. Jermaine, and maybe you could be put on that. Thank you, Carrie, that's all. I make a motion to close the meeting.
Do I support?
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?